Pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this Board is authorized to meet electronically, and these reasons shall be reflected in the minutes. Please note that there is no physical location to observe and listen contemporaneously to this meeting, which was authorized pursuant to the Governor's emergency order. However, in accordance with the emergency order, this is to confirm that we are: A) Providing public access to the meeting by telephone. Members of the public wishing to attend this meeting electronically may call the conference number from home, and when prompted, follow the instructions that are listed under News and Announcements under the Town's website, www.alton.nh.gov; B) Providing additional public access by video or other electronic means. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the Board have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting, and the public has access to contemporaneously listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through the link that is listed under News and Announcements on the Town's website, www.alton.nh.gov; C) Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to abutters and the public at the telephone conference and by using Zoom. D) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting that a member of the public wishes to speak or be recognized during the public input at a public hearing. If you are calling in by conference call, press the star sign and then the number 9 to raise your hand, so to speak, to request to speak to the Board. If you are using a laptop computer, you can use the Raise Hand button to request to speak to the Board. Several members of the public may be conferenced in and requests to speak will be handled sequentially, one at a time. The Zoom moderator will allow you to speak when the Board opens public input. E) Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem accessing this meeting, please call 603-307-1002. F) Adjourning the meeting if the public is unable to access the meeting. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via conference call where there are difficulties with the Town's equipment, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled to Tuesday, July 21, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. So we're going to start this meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, also please state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is also required under the Right to Know Law. So we'll start with the roll call.
You want me, the unseen one, to go first?
Sure.
Tom Hoops, I'm in a room all by myself.
Scott Williams, in my living room, in my Lacy Boy, by myself. The dog's just left.
Oh, that's good. Don't want a dog squealing.
That's right.
Russ Wilder, in a room by myself.
Robert Regan, in the man cave.
Drew Carter, here at Town Offices. And Virgil McDonald is here. He just stepped out of the room for a moment, but he will be back.
Yeah, and Roger just said he just went by Ruben, so he'll be right there to see Virgil in a second.
Okay.
I hope he wasn't texting when he was driving. That's all I can say.
I've ridden with him. I know he is.
All right, so we have a little bit more of the formalities to get through. Until further notice, to keep our members and staff safe and to comply with RSA 91-A, the COVID-19 State of Emergency, and the Governor's orders on restrictions at public gatherings, the Town of Alton is moving from in-person meetings to remote audio participation meetings. To remotely attend the meeting, audio only, you can visit the website again at www.gov for telephone access and remote access instructions listed under News and Announcements on the homepage. You can access an audio/video livestream there as well. Also, by telephone, call the Planning Department's office at 603-875-2162 between 8:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. for more information and for the dialing code and meeting ID for each planned Board meeting. All right, so... All right, so we were just joined by Roger. You want to announce yourself and make it formal?
Roger Sample. The computer tech.
All right, so we're going to move on to the agenda. Were there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, since the agenda was posted, I've added, under Other Business, Old Business A, a letter and a letter from Brad Jones regarding release on his cash charity, and a memo from me to the Board. Under number 4B, I added a letter from Kevin Leonard and also an email regarding W&amp;W Ralph Trust LLC. And also, under 5A, it's just letting you know that subdivision approval came through on WW Ralph Trust subdivision, map 8 lot 310. And there's a new House Bill 1129 listed under 4, 5B. And what I'm also going to add tonight is number 6, the section that we waived last month. It's come before the Board. So it's just a discussion from me, so that's A. It's a discussion with Board members about talking to applicants with proposed projects and sort of do not have to recuse yourself on an application. And 6B, I'm just going to just let you know that I'm putting together a discussion for the July meeting on roads and subdivisions.
All right, our motion to accept the agenda as amended.
Still moved. Second.
The second there?
Yeah, I, Scott, seconds.
Who made the motion?
Tom Hoops.
Tom made the motion. Scott made the second.
All right.
And before we get... Okay, yeah, go ahead. Sorry. Scott Williams, aye.
Tom Hoops, aye.
Russ Wilder, I had a question about this. Are you going to be sending these documents to us, Jessica, by email?
What's documents?
The ones you just mentioned, you amended the agenda with.
Yes, those are included in the documents that I've already emailed out to you.
I don't... Okay, I don't...
There were three pages of them, three different emails.
Yeah, I got the... So they were in those three emails, right?
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, good. Aye.
Robert Regan, aye.
Now it's you people there.
Roger, aye. And Drew Carter, aye.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just say one thing. Virgil, I'm very sorry for the loss of your dad the other day. I'm sorry for that.
I didn't know that.
Very sad.
Thank you, Virgil.
All right, so continued from February 18, 2020. So we're going to call case T20-04 for Brad Jones, agent for Rand Hill Realty, for a conceptual consultation for a major site for him.
I was thinking about going straight to his house because I figured he should know this.
It was closer.
That are listening to the meeting? Do you have several?
Yes, we have someone named Amanda.
Amanda, that would be Amanda Conley? Okay, perfect, thank you, Amanda.
Would you like me to administer her?
Yes, please. I think Amanda and Brad are together, so we can just confirm that when they get on. Thank you.
Do you want to cover the plan and review real quick?
Yeah, let's just wait until they pop up. Make sure... I'm school for a few things. Amanda, are you there?
Yar, can you hear us? Can you hear us? You guys not have... I do, and it should be. Yeah, I had to turn it.
Did you turn on your camera? There's a start video on the thing, Amanda.
Right now. Can you...
There you go. Yeah, we got you.
We were going to type Roger down. We thought we shouldn't do that. So I'm here, Amanda. My husband Gary Conley is here with us.
Wow, you guys just went out.
Amanda, can you hold on a second? You're coming in really sketchy. The video's kind of cutting out a lot.
If it continues this way, have her call in.
They need to be, they need to be video.
If they just don't do the video, we can hear them better because they're using up bandwidth with the video.
Right, legally, we have to see their faces.
I'm also calling my phone if that's for audio.
Yeah, we see you guys again now. Well, Brad and Gary, anyway.
I got to fix... I have to disable the computer audio. Call in, so we can still see them.
Okay.
We need phone for audio.
Amanda? Amanda?
Yeah?
So if you can turn off the audio of your computer and call in, but leave up your video on the computer so we can see you physically?
Okay. Yep.
Can you try doing that?
Oh, is it going to click to her if she shuts off the audio?
Hold on, so choose phone number to call. Okay, hold on.
Yeah, we didn't have people as well, though. Oh, yeah. We hit them all. Everybody was on the screen.
I see them all now.
Kevin's trying to get some stuff off, if it helps.
Get closer to Gary. Big sunspot right near where you are, Brad.
Do you guys have that too?
Oh, yeah.
We can't see you, Brad.
I can see him. Can see him fine.
He's trying to be king social.
Everybody smile.
Is it better now if I still call in? Yeah, that's fine. You hear us and I should call in right now?
Oh, your audio's better now. Let's try and go with it this way and see what happens.
Can you hear us okay?
Okay. We can hear you as long as you can see us.
Well, we can see half of Gary's face. He should shrugle up to you a little bit. That way we can see Gary. There you go, Gary, nice job.
So I'm just going to go over the plan review really quick. It's pretty short. I just want to point out a few things, and then I'll let Drew take over. So just the conceptual consultation. It's just a basic review with an applicant. Just, you know, some things to go over. Abutters aren't notified in this process, but I would highly suggest that if we have people calling in, that we do allow public input just because this has been sort of a hot topic in town. And I've gotten a lot of phone calls, emails, inquiries, not only stemming from this application, but from ZBA application. So that's just...
From what other application, Jess?
They also have a ZBA application for special exceptions.
Okay, very good. I didn't hear the ZBA part. Sorry.
Yeah.
Have to notify abutters on those anyway. It's not a suggestion. It's a... They have to.
It's a suggestion for tonight.
We're participating by the public. It's not required, but...
The boss has already left. Turns out you're at the station. This meeting's going.
It's required for a conceptual consultation. It's required for the ZBA.
But you were recommending it, so...
No, she's saying if somebody, if the public wants to call in tonight and discuss it, we'll allow them to speak.
Yes.
We're not required to allow them, but saying that that is an option.
Oh, I see. So they don't ask them, but...
They don't have to, but I'm just suggesting that I think we should because it's a live project.
Now I understand.
Yeah, okay.
Also, we should state... Also, we should state that this conversation, any discussions and non-binding by any parties?
Correct.
Nothing that's discussed here is enforceable.
Correct. Josh, can you pull up the plan review? I think it might be number...
Number 3 on the first day.
Nice job, Josh.
Could you go to page 2, please? Can you scroll down to the bottom of the page? So I just wanted to clarify something before I go through that list, that little bullet list. Under the section that says what to do next, that last bullet point talks about that the Board has 65 days to make a decision after an application is determined complete. This is the design review phase. So I just wanted to point out that right now there's an emergency order number 23 that currently it waves all of the deadlines, things like that. So I just meant to change that and update it. I use just a regular format, so I just wanted to point that out, that currently we don't have that deadline, but of course, we're going to move through and accommodate everybody as soon as we can. But I just wanted to point that out. So Josh, you could just scroll back up to that middle section to where all those bullet points are. And these are just some of the things... These are just some of the things that the Board can be thinking about while Brad and Amanda and Gary present their case. And I suppose we could have Brad start.
Yeah, yeah. So Brad, if you want to start your presentation?
I'm Brad Jones of Jones of Beach Engineers, and I'm representing the Conleys on their commercial project. The property's located on Route 11 and in between Rand Hill Road. And the property's 9.4 acres, so 10 acres. And it's sized of three different parcels. And they actually acquired two parcels and then surplus land from the state of New Hampshire to get that 9.9 acres. So at this, we would like to look at all the good news. It's a great, it's a great 11. And with some construction...
Excuse me, we're hearing about every other word Brad's saying. I don't know if it's like that to everybody.
We're on the same issue. What are we... So I'm going to just call... I'm just going to consult with Josh for a second just to see what we should do. So what's going on, Josh?
In their video?
Yep.
Have them stop there and see you're on and call in. Only way the audio's going to work 100%.
So is the audio still on? On the computer? So stop and have them get out of it and get back in just video?
Well, they could just stop the audio.
Just stop the audio.
Stop the audio.
And then phone call in.
Amanda, are you calling in on your phone?
Yeah, I'll... I'll hang up, hold on. Um, that'll...
Yeah, so call in on your phone and turn off the audio on your laptop.
Very important that the audio is turned off on the laptop.
Because that audio on your laptop is lagging, and we can't really understand what you're saying.
It almost acts like there was some incidental noise in the room that caused it to cut out, I think, but I'm not sure. If it's not completely quiet, that won't work very good.
Yeah, it's showing up as low bandwidth.
That's that... You guys are Rand Hill Road? Maybe that was your problem, Roger.
Wasn't me, it's Rand Hill Road.
Okay, so I muted my computer. Oh, no. Can you hear me now?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay, great. Do you want me to just start over? If everyone can hear now?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, so once again, this is Brad Jones. I'm with Jones of Beach Engineers, and I'm here representing the Conleys on their project. It's located down off of Route 11 in Rand Hill Road, and it consists of 9.84 acres. And the property is actually three different parcels. And the first two parcels were purchased a while back, and then recently, there was a surplus land from the state of New Hampshire that was purchased, and we want to eventually combine the property to have a 9.84 acre piece of property. It's got 1,500 feet of frontage on Rand Hill Road and 1,450 feet of frontage on Route 11. Right now, the property has seasonal water, and it's really kind of like it has the old railroad bed that used to run back through there. So that's the reason we're trying to... Got the name of it as Little Cole Landing. So we have met with the DOT, and we talked about the access points. We've got three access points shown on the plans that everyone has in front of them. They have tentative...
Can I just interrupt you for a second, Brad?
Sure.
I'm sorry. I'm going to have Josh put the plan up on the screen so that we can see it.
Oh, great, okay.
It's a site plan.
Are those existing driveway cuts?
There was driveway cuts on the property. Is that right?
There's like a turnaround where everybody kind of pulls off now. And then there's one a little bit further down that they blockaded off with like a four-foot sand pile where the old railroad bed cut through, and the station was on the land. So they were used at one point, whether it was for the railroad or cars, to cut through. But the visibility from the state, that's kind of why they thought we probably wouldn't have any issues because there is already so much cut in.
Well, you know, we did... The question is, is the state recognizing three driveway cuts?
They're the ones who told us we could probably get three driveways.
Perfect.
Yeah, and we both...
We have to actually fly, but based on our conversation, that's what they told us.
Go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, so, yeah, and that's something, I mean, as we get down the road a little further, we will submit a full highway access plan to DOT and go through the exact locations of the entrances. But like I say, our first meeting with them, it seems like it was not, we weren't going to have any issue or resistance as far as, you know, we had absolutely no issue with site distance or anything like that. It's just coming up with a final plan and, you know, meet their requirements, you know, when we finalize the project. So if you look at the plan, on the far left, that is a proposed gas station, and it's a kind of a small gas station. It's a little over. I think we've increased the size a tiny bit, but it's 3,000...
2,080.
Yeah, it's 28 there. We're looking at 3,000 square feet is what we're going to bring forth to the zoning board. And there'll be a canopy and two pump islands. And it's similar to the station that's up there in Guilford that's, you know, kind of on a smaller scale. And then if you see, you notice that that site would access the other parcel. And I don't know if you have that ability to pull up that plan, the next... Guess it would be the next site plan.
Page 2.
Okay, great, yeah. So on that plan, that shows the... If you look at the rear of the site, right where you are there, those two buildings are for boat storage. And that's 2,300 and 500, 20 square feet of building. And then down to the right of that is actually a boat repair. That's a single building, that's 7,200 square feet. And then the two buildings out close to Route 11, those will be retail. And then if you look to the far right, you'll see another two buildings that are retail over there. All these buildings will have to be on the on-site septic, and there'll be a community well that'll service the entire site. There'll be probably just a single well with a radius to deal with, you know, the size of the property and the gallons per day. So that's kind of the layout we have now, and we realize and recognize that we need to go in front of the zoning board to get some special exceptions for the use. I think the use is, it's a great location for this. The Town really needs, you know, instead of just having a boat storage, and we need something that would actually employ people and create jobs. And I really think this is the right location for that. So that's kind of the overview. I don't know, Amanda, if you wanted to get into the buildings a little bit and, you know, kind of the uses of that?
So the front floor building, meaning building... See if I can read it from the screen. Building number 3 and building number 4, and building number 6 and building number 7, those are all retail-type buildings. We've had several tenants or people reach out to us about occupancy. That would all either be considered already a yes in the zone that they're in or would be by special exemption. And at that point, we'd have to go back to zoning and get that approved. The buildings can have anywhere from one to...
Potentially, what, five tenants?
And probably not, but they would have internal walls that could be separated so that if somebody wanted to come in, like there was talks at one point of a floor is looking for a place. Maybe she only needs, you know, one fifth of the building. So they would be split out based on the tenant, or the tenant could have the whole building depending on their needs. We've been working with an architect. I don't think you have those plans, but I do have them on my computer if you want me to screenshot them to you. Because it was the old Loon Cove Landing station, we've asked our architect to try to incorporate some of the architectural features of the original Loon Cove Railroad station that was onsite and then try to carry those features forward into the other buildings. We live in the neighborhood and we want to make sure that we're not gonna be doing anything to devalue property values. So, it's really important to us that it kind of has a aesthetically pleasing look that's kind of unison throughout the property. And like I said, I can show you. So, the gas station building is very similar to the station with the hip roof, the support column, the chair rail, those kind of things. And then the other buildings will carry the siding forward in the same coloring. So, they won't look like big ugly commercial buildings. And then the back two buildings, which are the storage buildings, building one and building two, we purposely put them behind the other buildings and plan to lower the grade so that it's kind of one level lot. And it will buffer the amount of impact it'll have on Rand Hill that runs behind it so that you won't have these buildings sticking high up onto Rand Hill Road for visibility. The back two buildings will be darker in color so they'll be more apt to blend into the background than kind of stick out like the front buildings, which will be lighter in color with that darker accent.
I have one statement to make and Amanda, you may want to check with the fire department. On buildings over 10,000 square feet, they are subject to sprinkler systems. So, you might want to check that ahead of time.
So, we have had that conversation. We've been working on these plans for several years now. And the last conversation we had, they told us we needed to be under 12,000.
Oh, okay.
So, that was, I did it down. But again, if that is the case, then they'll probably have to be adjusted down to 9,000 square feet.
Okay, I just, oh, I was, just wanted you to be aware of it so you didn't get blindsided.
No, we appreciate it. And like I said, we've had, we've talked to the state as well as the town and both John Dever and the fire department. We've gotten several different answers as well. So, we'll have to confirm that again. But that was based on the preliminary information that we were provided from conversations.
I have a question. I have a question about Lot 5-2. You don't, is that one of the lots that's part of this development?
Hold on.
It doesn't have any- It doesn't have anything on it.
Yeah, that's part of the 9.84 acres. Right now, we're gonna, we're showing a line to, so we, there is a home that's located on Rand Hill Road. And that's also owned by the Conley's. So, we would have that combined, actually do a lot line adjustment so that would have proper frontage and size and buildable area for that lot.
For the house that's already there?
That's right, yeah. So, that may be a residential, yep.
That'd be a lot line or a subdivision? Would that be a lot line or a subdivision?
Lot line.
Well, I mean, that was on the parcel. Right now, that's on a larger lot. So, there'll be a lot, lot line adjustment, I suppose. Because we've got three lines now, we're gonna move it down to one line, divided into two separate lots is the answer, yep.
I think a lot merger would be the appropriate term to use.
Sure.
One other question, Brad, is this in the Acapulco district?
I mean, it is not, no.
It's not? It's all sand and gravel in there?
Yeah.
Brad, they had a big mound up in the state left when they did the road. There's a few gravestones on top. Is that at the end of the spring?
That's actually, that's on the boat storage property, Virgil, the other boat storage property.
Yeah, it's not on our-
This is not Boot Hill, as Marion called it.
Do you know, I'm in, how many square foot Andrews storage you inside?
I thought it was on the state land that abuts ours, the next lot over.
What, you're looking for is where the graveyard was?
No, no, no. I'm just, I just wanted to know if you knew, I'm in, what the square footage is of Andrews buildings, the storage building. Just so I can kind of picture it up there on the hill.
I think I have it, hold on. Yeah, that's right.
Now you can focus on it.
I thought I had it, but maybe I don't.
Meanwhile, I have a question. Will there be automobile access between the gas station and the retail shops? Or will we have to go back out to Route 11 to go between the two?
Yes, there will absolutely be access, yep. And that's shown on the, kind of the back of the gas station. If you follow back, that's a road that kind of runs through the whole property. It kind of feeds, so you can get to any of these stores or buildings through any of the three access points.
Okay, I had guessed that that was the case, but I just wanted to get clarification.
And we did have to, when we talked, when you were talking about the cemetery, we did have to complete an archaeology survey when we purchased the property from the state. So, that's already been completed and obviously the cemetery isn't on our lot, it's on the lot next door to us.
That's a good way.
I guess I have a question as well, if you have a chance.
Sure.
I guess this is to Brad, this is Tom Hoops. The Route 11 is pretty heavy traffic there. And where the gas station is and where you're gonna be having trailers towing boats, you're really gonna need a pull-off lane and a turning lane. So, that's something I think you really should think about because the amount of traffic that is coming through there and it's just starting to slow down before it gets to the bay, but it hasn't slowed down yet.
Yeah, and Tom, we purposely didn't show any modifications to Route 11 because, you know, after we get through the ZBA process and get a little further into it, we need to have a scoping meeting, meet with DOT out on site and hammer down exactly what they want. And I don't disagree with it at all, you know, but we are-
I only bring it up because we have this ongoing situation with Dunkin' Donuts. That, you know, it wasn't brought up at the beginning. And I just want to make sure that, that's a real question that I have. I would go for, one other question is going to be the heights of the boat storage buildings. I know that your property is lower than what the other side of Rand Hill is, but if those buildings are high enough, they may impact the view of the people on the backside of Rand Hill. I don't know.
Not much to look at there, Tom.
Well, there is now.
Well, trees across the street.
Yeah, so, we may have cleared the entire lot, but we did leave all the trees on the back boundary line. One, to protect those neighbors, us being one of the neighbors. And I don't want to look at ugly buildings. So, we looked up our backside. There is an old barn you can see, which is labeled 444 Rand Hill Road, which is right on the side of the road. And then the grade is gonna step down from there. So, they're gonna be built significantly down into the ground that when you're traveling around the coast, you'll just see, I don't even-
You're gonna look down?
You'll look down.
I always thought it was good to ask questions up front, that's all.
We've tried to think through most of these things.
One other thing I see here too, across the street, you have Loon Cove Road. That is actually Butler Road. Loon Cove is off 11D down further, so that, this needs to be corrected.
Oh, good, yeah, we can make that correction, that's easy.
If you remember Sid Butler, own busy corner store.
Okay, yep.
Across the street from your grandfather's real estate office.
Certainly.
Yeah, that was down below Bucky's place. The office is still there. Barely, but it's still there.
His father had a spot right in front of Curry Realty, grandfather, was right there.
Yep, a little small, little office, looked like a fishing shack.
Exactly.
So, this is Drew Carter. The question I had was about outdoor boat storage. There's, I assume there are gonna be times where there's boats are gonna need to be staged, whether they're coming in or going out. And I don't see much of an accommodation for that.
Yeah, so, one of the things that you notice, there is an access point on Rand Hill Road. So, that's gonna help with our traffic flow and that's gonna be actually a fourth access point. But that's gonna give also an ability for a boat trailer to maneuver and come back through and then back into those buildings. Right now, I have 40 feet of space between the building and the parking stalls, you know, and that's, you know, pretty significant. You gotta know how to back a trailer, but, but right now, if we can put turning radiuses and kind of look at all that and make sure that, you know, we've got enough to jockey boats and trailers and make that all work, so.
Yeah, I guess where I was going with this is like at Andrews, as was mentioned earlier, boats are often left sitting out front for long periods of time. And I don't see faces, you know, housing for that potential.
And that's also why we kind of- And tried to tuck those buildings behind the other buildings because we want to make sure that, you know, if there was a boat that, let's call it in the staging area, that it would still be buffered from the road. That when you drive by, you'll still have that quintessential small-town feel and not feel like you're looking at a big storage building or the boat or two that are waiting to go in.
Is this a single-level storage?
No, it'd probably be rack storage.
Yeah.
So, you've got a fork vehicle there anyway?
Yeah, yep. And there is a ton of, what do you call it, ground space in buildings that, you know, the boat can be staged and prepped in as well before they get stored. As well as, as well as building number six, which is that boat repair building, which will serve as an auxiliary building potentially for those two. So, maybe that's where they get, you know, things done before they're heading into storage.
Rand Hill, it's actually in the retail space. Right between boat repair and the retail, alright.
One question is drainage on the boat repair and the gas station. You might have to have some special kind of drainage for that.
Yep. Yeah, we've designed quite a few gas stations and they, you know, around the canopy, there's special concrete drains to absorb any gas and that type of thing on that pad. Yeah, we would definitely, you know, make sure that's isolated and not gonna cause any contamination if there's any kind of spill and all that, so, yep.
That's good, that's good.
You're gonna have a storage for the gas over at the retail, at the boat repair?
A storage for the gas, what do you mean by that?
Fuel for the boats, you're gonna have some sort of storage means at the repair facility?
No, we just go right down to the gas station.
Well, I'm just thinking the old gas and stuff. Because that's, if there's some storage there, we had to be careful and put the previous pavement stuff in so because of the Acapulco area there. The old gas, is it?
Meaning like when we're winterizing the boat and the old gas that comes out, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, the spills and stuff, but, actually, the previous pavement was just put up more buildings.
More buildings, but it's also in the Acapulco right there. Because that's what all comes in and it's not just doors.
I mean, if there was an issue with gas that had to be removed, I'm sure that would be put in some kind of temporary container to then be moved like it would if it was a different material, yeah, waste oil or anything like that.
I have a little bit of a concern about the access to Rand Hill Road. I, that's a residential street and to dump a lot of traffic, I think that should be looked at a little bit. I mean, a little traffic's one thing, but, you know, if it's a lot, then it's, I don't know, whatever the best thing is.
And that's really, it's not like it would be affected, everybody would be going out that end anyway.
I think it's more of a service entrance than it would be, I mean, I guess the general public could go through it. But I think our conversations were more serving as a service entrance than necessarily getting a lot of traffic and activity.
One thing that I, one thing, when Hannaford was built, that accesses the Range Road right behind it there. And they were required to put a gate there. I mean, for emergency purposes, that's fine, but, I don't know, I just worry about the neighbors there.
Because all your retail shops are using it and you'll be using it on the boats. Well, the only other thing I wonder, and you've probably already been through it anyway, but the grade. I mean, you're talking about putting these buildings down and Rand Hill's gonna be quite a ways up there, so that's gonna be quite a hill.
Yeah, this doesn't show the grading, but that, obviously, this lot slopes. Rand Hill's quite a bit higher than the Route 11. So, the, and you're right, that access down into that is, you're gonna be going downhill. I thought it might have had a 7% grade or something coming down. So, but that's good because that's gonna tuck these buildings down into the ground and then it kind of, the lot levels off a little bit as we get to Route 11. So, it's kind of ideal for getting the buildings and setting them down into the ground and so you're not gonna, you're not gonna see them from Rand Hill.
And the retaining walls that-
Yeah, we actually have retaining walls designed behind the boat storage. So, that's gonna, you know, that's gonna actually, again, kind of set that in, there'll be concrete walls. So, some of this, some of this building's gonna actually be buried in the rear. When you say, when I say buildings, the building storage and the boat repair will actually be buried, you know, the buried wall in the back.
That makes their back walls go-
I see the 25 feet in the back of the retail buildings. Is that just gonna be like a grass area or is that gonna be accessibility to the back of the buildings?
Just a buffer from the road.
Yeah, that was just a setback, just to show that, this is not, it's, yeah, building setbacks, so.
And to the right of retail, you can see, possible left a huge buffer there because that's the closest neighbor to the property. And we wanted to make sure we protected them. So, I don't know if you can see any further to the right yet. So, see how we've left a big buffer area there? That's the closest neighboring house that would be impacted. And so, and we've talked to them, wanted to make sure that there was a buffer to kind of protect them and another great spot to potentially put septic or well.
The easement being abandoned.
I was asking about the shape.
About the what?
The shape of the structures, in other words, are we talking flat roofs, peaked roofs? I know that the requirement for the town structures starts down further at the bay, but it would be more appealing to have a peaked roof than a flat roof.
Do you want to see the building?
Tom, I think she previously mentioned-
I have no idea what they look like.
Tom, I think she previously mentioned they're gonna look like the railroad theme of a hip roof and things of that nature, so, is that correct?
Do you want, would you like me to show you the plans thus far?
The screen share?
I'd love to.
Again, they're rough at this point because we didn't want to go too far until we knew how big these buildings were gonna be and- how big these buildings were gonna be and how many and et cetera.
I think you know, say that, I don't.
No, barely.
Yes, when you pull up the road fire.
Okay. Can you all see my screen yet?
I can see you. Smile.
She is smiling.
How, how do I share my screen? Or does the moderator have to do it?
Did we shut that off?
Oh, you need Tom Barney's daughter to help you.
Amanda?
Yeah?
Alright, so at the bottom of the screen, at the bottom of your screen, there should be an option to share your screen.
Okay, hold on.
Somewhere, it should say share.
If you move your mouse over, it should pop up a little.
And then choose what you wanna share.
Desktop, well, we'll see what I share.
You're telling us just look at it.
Be able to record the content of your screen. Okay, well, it's saying I'm gonna have to log out and log back in, which I really don't want to do.
I wouldn't either.
I haven't, I haven't monitored onto my screen, so I'm gonna turn my screen and let's see if this works. There with me. This is just.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. That's excellent.
I just can't see what I'm doing, so I'm here in the screen, so. It's like blind leading the blind here. Hold on.
No, you, you resolve my questions and, and curiosity because they're not boxes.
Okay, so let's keep going. Uh, so this is, can you see it on the screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, so this is the gas station. Okay, um, so this is the gas station. You can kind of see the like hip roof, like the old, um, railroad station used to have and like the chair rail, the kind of the support column. And then I'm gonna give you the side peripheral. So this is like maybe from the road looking in. So it really looks like the Loon Cove Station. We tried to encompass the little peak that the station has so that it has a very Altonian, small-town feel. And then, as we carried it forward, so this would, oh, please, hold on, come on, alright. So as we carried it forward to the retail building, we tried to do the same thing. So this roof isn't hip like the other one because it just doesn't make sense, but we tried to again carry the peaks in. These you can see stick out, so one or two of them maybe would stick out so you'd have that like small-town main street shop feel. And each building would be based on the tenants, like if they're the tenant who needs the whole building, there's probably no point in having two peaks and four doors. We just kind of had the architect put that in so you could have a feel for what it could look like. And, and, uh, this building would be the gas, uh, boat service building, which would be kind of tucked out back. So same thing, we tried to add the pop-out on the front, keep the triangle. It also gives people a place to wait if it was raining out, um, and then add the service doors, again, whether it has four or three or two, as to kind of shimmy in and get through zoning and then back to planning. Um, it can change, but this is kind of the look we're going for. And then this would be the boat storage building. So this is the square of them, but we tried to do a kind of a lower roof so it's not gonna stick up on Rand Hill. We tried to add some features so that it has a little bit of overhang, so it's just not a big ugly building and kind of left enough room that we could, you know, put a bench or two or some flowers outside. And then again, this building would be dark, so it wouldn't be the white or the cream like the other buildings. Instead, it would just be like a dark color to blend into that background wall. We don't want it to be the attraction. We don't want it to necessarily be what people are looking for. We want them to pull in, see this cute little gas station, kind of like the one that's in Meredith by downtown, you know, right across from the public dock that has that cutesy little small-town feel. Doesn't feel like a big, huge, commercial urban station. It feels like it fits in. Um, and then the same thing with the retail buildings where they have that, you know, front entrance where, you know, you feel like you're more on a main street than a strip mall or a development. Anybody need to see any of the other ones again?
You know, I, you've obviously put some effort into this and I'm pleased.
We've been working really hard until COVID hit.
It, it shows.
Well, and if you want to see, oh, let's see, hold on back here. Um, so this is, let me see if I can get to one here. Hold on. Just give me a second. Hold on. So this is the original. Can you see this picture?
Yep.
Yep, that's the old building.
Yep, so you can see the, the triangle on the top. You can see the supportive. You can see the, the, um, chair rail, the windows, the little bump out. All of those were features that we sent to the architect as well as the original dimensions, which I got from the historical society so that he could kind of keep it, um, within proportion.
The building is right down behind Town Hall.
I know. Well, I asked if I could move it back, but.
I have trouble with Marty on that.
Exactly.
Um, Marty Cornelius was not o- okay with that idea.
I'm sure he wasn't.
Um, I also, we kind of looked at other images that, um, Marty was great at helping me, um, go through, like, this is one of the buildings and that was originally, I think, by Irvin, uh, Erwin. And so we looked at like kind of the darker roofs, the white buildings, the roof lines, and we tried to, um, include that in, like this mobile gas station was one of the ones that I sent and said, here, look, this is what a vintage gas station looks like, the black and white, the darker roof, um, that we tried to include. Yeah, and there was several gas stations in this area, um, in Loon Cove, a little further up 11D, um, as well as a restaurant that used to be, well, I think where Rand Hill actually is now. So, any more questions on these or? I think there it is.
No, does the board have any other questions or comments?
I think it, I think it's, nice job.
Alright, looks good.
Yeah.
Alright, so at this point, I'm sorry, what's that?
Say, we were just kind of looking for you for, yeah, input on thoughts.
I, I had had just one question before we went to the, to the thing there. The, the abandoned easement, who's easement is that?
Power company, the power to Rand Hill 11.
It doesn't. It's the power company, it used to come from Route 11 to service Rand Hill. It no longer does. Yeah, it's been abandoned.
Well, they probably still have an easement. They usually don't let go of their easements once they have them.
Yep, they do. And so that is actually on our list too, to discuss it with them about, you know, whether it can go up in a certain spot or get moved on a different lot, or part of the lot.
Yeah.
Or remotely.
Just so you'll know, that will be an uphill battle.
Oh, yeah. It's on the, we're, we're there.
I would still say though, that Brad, that one of the, um, more important things would be discussing with DOT about the turning because you're gonna have traffic in an awkward spot. And I would, I, I think that's a, a, to me, that's the most concerned thing I have about the whole project, alright?
Yeah, no, I, I completely agree with you and, uh, and like I say, we purposely didn't show anything on there because it, without, without talking to them and, you know, getting a little further into this, we don't want, uh, you know, really, you need that coping meeting. That's what's gonna drive, uh, you know, exactly how we're gonna, gonna approach the, uh, the traffic. But no, I, I, I agree with you, Tom, absolutely.
Thank you. So with this drawing, where would you put a turning lane? Would that, would that, would you have to alter the drawing, your building sets?
The right-of-way is what? How wide's the right-of-way there, Brad? Sixty-six feet?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's at least sixty-six feet, I, I believe it is, but, yeah, so there's plenty of room to, you know, span and, and pull, uh, have, have a deceleration lane or whether they want a, uh, turning lane, which, you know, most likely they, they would. But, um, and once again, it's, it's, it, it's based on the, the build-out that we have now. Uh, we go to zoning and make sure we can, we can have the gas station and there's, uh, that, you know, if, if, if that was out of the mix, it would be a different, different amount of traffic in there, you know, so.
Have you done any traffic studies yet?
We have not yet. We've talked to DOT three or four times now and we've gone in and they told us to hold tight until we kind of had a final plan to present. They would require us to do a traffic study, but it depends upon what the uses are of the, of the land. So they're like, if there's no gas station, it's different than if there is a gas station. If it's X, then you need Y. So they didn't really want us to do the traffic study until we were further into the process.
Makes sense.
Alright, does the board have anything else?
Uh, just one thing. Uh, I do believe this is in the aquifer protection district. I was just looking up on the USGS website and it clearly shows there's a stratified drift aquifer under, under here.
Okay, we can look at that, yep.
Yep.
So would that be, would that put them in the, what is it, chorus or non?
It's, it's all, it's all sand and gravel under there. It's all mapped as, uh, as a pretty productive material. That's all, that whole side of the lake there was all sand and gravel, as you know, uh, and.
Until you cross the road on Rand Hill Road, then it gets ugly, right?
Right. Yeah, as, as soon as you, as soon as you go off above Rand Hill, it's all glacial till up there, but down in, in the flat area. And that, uh, that ridge that you're, you're probably used to level the lot with, that's sand and gravel. That's pretty good stuff.
Absolutely.
Well, it is all sand and gravel, but when they're done, it's gonna be all roofs and asphalt.
Right. So that, I mean, that, that's gotta be, I think the consideration is, is that if that affects the amount of pavement and roofs and stuff that you have to have and how you design your infiltration and protect the groundwater quality as well, so.
Yeah, you may want to look at, um, roof water, getting those into some dry wells or something, those, that's a good way because it's clean, there's nothing in it and you can just get that right back in the ground.
That'd be AOT moment.
Yeah, I mean, the infiltration will work great on, on this site. Uh, we do have a lot of area too with a, almost a natural drainage pond in between the gas station and the, uh, and the retail. So there's, there's a kind of a, a hole with, with a railroad bed ran through, um, you know, so, so we do, we do have a lot of area to, to do the drainage and, um, and we haven't, we haven't started the drainage study or any of that. We just, we really want to walk through the.
Yeah.
Uh, planning ZDA and then, and then we're gonna go to town and, um, you know, and then, and hammer, hammer the plan out, you know, so.
And another thing, just for memorialization factors, maybe it'd be good at, in one of your plans, you show where the railroad bed is, just for hysterical reasons. That way it can, it can always be part of Alton to show where that railroad ran.
So Gary really wants to do some kind of memorialization on the property in general, maybe over by the gas station, um, where we can show like kind of the old railroad map, what it looked like, um, and then maybe even some tracks or, um, or an old train or something along those lines that, you know, we can make you feel like, you know, what was here, um.
And we do, when we did the survey, we did a complete topo, uh, ground, ground survey. So we have located that entirely.
Yeah, I'm sure you have.
Don't see, you don't see any topo plans, which, uh, we, what, you know, as we want to come in with a simple plan at this point, but, uh, but the next, the next time we're in, you'll see all that and, uh, and we do have that bed, uh, located and all that.
Marty might be able to find you a caboose.
Uh, we, we, we also, like I said, which Brad mentioned right in the beginning, but we did, um, register Loon Cove landing with the state because we're hoping that's what the development can be called in honor of the Loon Cove Station, you know, and it was the railroad landing where, um, you know, where the train came in and had to stop. So we're trying to pay homage to what it was.
I'm good.
What have you, have you put any thought to the landscaping or buffer along 11?
Meaning like grass, flowers, trees, those kind of things or?
Yes.
Not necessarily at this point. Obviously, we plan to have grass and flowers and, um, probably smaller trees as necessary, um, where, you know, where landscape is, is required. And then obviously we have the tree line down the back of Rand Hill.
The site plan lists a lot of different things about different types of planting, so it would be worth looking at that.
Yeah, we will, like you said, it's just more, we're trying to do a baby step, um, and didn't want to, you know, put all the wells, put all the septic, put all the landscaping to then have, you know, uh, DCA or AOT or zoning, change it and then, you know, having to redo everything, but.
No, I, I just meant that you, you, it's something you gotta keep in the back of your mind, that's all.
It, it's on our list.
Okay, fine.
Alright, uh, and anything else from the board?
Just, I mean, because obviously next time you, you come to us, we'll be with your plans. Probably when you borrow it back to the ZDA, so next time they come to us, we'll be with your plans. So you just want to look into that, that landscaping thing there because there's actually qualifications for that. I mean, so much area has to have so much trees. I mean, Brad probably knows that, but, you know, so as you're making a plan, you don't want to come all the way in and say, well, geez, you know, those three trees ain't gonna cut it. Kind of, you know, check with, with Jessica or, you know, they'll tell you just how much stuff you have to do.
The percentage we need.
Yeah, we'll actually have a, part of the set of plans would be a landscape plan and, uh, usually we do landscape and lighting and, and that'll be on one, one plan and, uh, might even be two sheets and be very detailed and, uh, you know, so, so we will do that and have a, uh, obviously that's important. Uh, and the detention ponds themselves, they could be gravel wetland, uh, something like that. So there, so there'll be some plantings around there as well. And that, and that takes up quite a bit of space in the center of the, of the site. So, uh, but yeah, we, we will have all that.
I have a, uh, I have a question. Do you have a scheduled target for completion? Two years, three years, five years?
Well, we were hoping to break ground this fall when we submitted applications for, in, for February to meet, but now with that, we kind of have to go back to the, the drawing board as to when we can officially start. So we're thinking now fall is at least spring to summer of next year. And, and then completion date will depend on when we can get started.
I imagine the market will play a role in that as well.
Totally. The retail buildings, you know, the rest of them are kind of, um.
Automatic.
Yeah, relatively. It'll be those four style buildings. So, you know, potentially, let's see here, building three and four would probably get built first. And then that way, if five and six were later, it wouldn't look like anything, you know, was missing. Everything will probably be done in sections.
Please don't reach the staff if we need some competition.
What'd he say?
Alright, uh, if the board is all set at this point, I think you're gonna move this on and open this up for public input, whether it be for or against the, the application. We are gonna hear from the public in the order in which they called in, and we are gonna ask that the public limit their comments to about five minutes. So Josh, do you have? Anybody in queue?
I have one raised.
Okay, so.
However, I do have two, um, actually one telephone user. Uh, if they do have any public input, just hit star nine on that.
Okay, so, so the telephone user, if, uh, uh, if you do want public input, star nine is how you raise your hand to get into the queue. But in the meantime, we're gonna hear from Julie, I'm sorry, Brown, Julie Brown? Okay, Julie, can you hear us?
I can. Good evening.
We can hear you.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing from me. I'm Julie Brown.
I'm Julie Brown. I've been a resident of Alton for three years and seventh generation. My kids are the seventh generation on the lake, big stakeholder in the area. I have some concerns about the plan, specifically the amount of impervious surface that's proposed in a very important watershed area with the grading that's there. And so I'm very concerned, my background's in, I'm a conservation biologist and I do all the watershed management over in Wolfborough. And so I'm really concerned about the infiltration, the amount of impervious surface, the, also the chemicals that we brought into the area through the gas station, through the boat facility. So my biggest concerns are environmental. And then from there, I'm also concerned about the, that this is not part of what the master plan zoning really intended for this area, that we have a downtown area that really could use revitalization, more shops, and to move out towards West Alton and add a gas station in an area that was previously forested is not in line with the master plan, especially considering the fact that the town voted in the warrant articles in the spring to invest money in master planning again and that the old master plan's out of date and doesn't reflect the current community. So I would urge the board to very, to consider, consider the concerns for the environmental impact of this area and additionally, specifically to water quality with adding that much impervious surface and then having that water get to the lake so quickly across the street with current threats to cyanobacteria being a real issue. And also to really reevaluate what's happening with the master planning process before we make that whole corridor into a boat storage facility and gas station. Thank you.
Excuse me.
So we kind of already touched on that impervious surface area, I guess, something that is going to be looked at, whether it be through permeable pavement or some other management of the surface water runoff, if I'm not mistaken. Did I get that fairly right, Brad?
Yeah, we would just mute it, but absolutely, I mean, if, you know, one of the possibilities to be porous pavement, that, we haven't got to that yet. We got to, we have to figure out a square footage and what the impact is and then, then will the next step be the drainage. So that's not, everything's on the table right now. Yep.
Just one thing, in the zoning ordinance, under the aquifer protection section, the ZBA has to consider, it's the ZBA actually has to consider the impact of subsurface disposal, septic subsurface disposal that says other than single family domestic waste. So there'll be a, there'll be additional work that you have to do to satisfy the ZBA in there. It's under, you know what section it is, but I was just looking it up. It's handy to have a computer right here, you can look the stuff up. But anyway, Brad, that's something that you, that will be required as part of the ZBA process.
Yeah, we'll look into.
That's good. And you know, Julie Brown raised a very good point that, and it's going to be a very common theme, I wouldn't be surprised about the environmental concerns. So I think as long as you are very sensitive to that throughout your design process, I think, you know, we'll see how it goes.
Also, lot coverage is covered in the zoning ordinance as well as, and it can be adjusted through groundwater recharge. So that's something that can be looked at.
I think that's why, for the drainage purposes, the reason that I asked about the boat repair and the, the gas station, a little extra attention for those two places are going to be necessary.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Well, seeing as we have no other public raising their hands digitally, we're going to now close the public input section. Brad, do you have any other comments?
No, I think I'm all set.
All right. Does the board have any more comments?
I'm fine.
All right. So I guess the, at this point here, so you're going to be required to submit an application for design review for a major site plan for this project. Request from the ZBA for special exceptions for all of the proposed uses. The application must be in compliance with the zoning ordinance and any requirements at the state or federal level, for instance, septic approvals, wetlands. Once the application is submitted, they will be scheduled for public hearing and notice letters will be sent to a butters. Planning board may schedule a site walk at some point here at that stage of the game, I guess.
Or do an application.
Once the portable allocation is due. All right. And we've also been here from other departments and et cetera.
Okay.
So I think that's good. So I think we're all set.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So we have still old business. Yes, coming to the road maintenance charity from Mike McNally.
Brad, is Brad still there? Is he still there?
Yes, I'm still here.
Okay.
On that back off.
Uh, Brad, please, yes.
Regarding the High Point Road, expiration date of the bond, letter dated May 13, 20, and regarding the release on the cash charity memo dated June 12, 2020 from Jessica. So.
Yeah, if I can just explain what my memo is. It's kind of lengthy. I did a lot of research last time we were here. We started talking about the road charity. There was questions like, you know, was, did the road get final approval? Maybe we should have an engineer go back out and look at it. So there was some sort of doubt as to whether the road was actually complete or not. So I gave, I gave everybody the memo ahead of time, hoping you at least glanced at it and got somewhat familiar with it. So I did go down and, you know, sort of explained, you know, road approval did happen. I, you know, gave examples of sort of what we discussed at the January meeting, at the road approval meeting. There were some emails back and forth on the question of how much should a road charity be? Just some updates in March between Brad and I, just kind of updating him on, you know, information about meetings and when we're going to have the next meeting. We talked about the final invoice for Mike McNally. On page two of that memo. The things that we discussed at the May meeting, you know, was the bond necessary? Questions of whether the road had final pavement. Scott had mentioned that you bond a project, it's either build or bond, which is correct. You can either build your road and get a hold on building permits put in place, or you can bond it and then get released sort of in sections as you move along and complete portions of the road. So yes.
Jessica, Jessica, if I can interrupt for a quick second. You can get building permits without the road being complete, you just can't get a CO.
Okay. So, all right. Thank you for clarifying that. So yes, that is, that is correct. So at that meeting, you instructed me to look further into everything, which is why I stem this memo, this memo stems from. Let's see. So after that meeting, Brad had provided me with a letter that he had received back in 2008 from Sharon, from Sharon Penny, that was telling him that the final pavement only needed sort of one winter, just needed a winter over. So as I, as I looked back at the regulations that were put in place at that time, I kind of, I didn't see where that information come from. I couldn't find it. So if we move on to my recommendation, so at the, so under the section that says recommendation, at the time that Brad received his final road approval, say. Okay. Mike McNally came up with a maintenance bond amount number. All right. So in the subdivision regulations, along with the even builder bonds, that's the first section, when you're done with your project, there's another bond that gets put in place for 18 months at 10% of the total cost of construction of the road, and it gets put in place for 18 months. So that's what this bond was that Mike came up with, $43,000 and some dollars. So when we were here last and I was trying to present that to you, there was questions on whether that was needed or not. So I did some research and the regulations state that that needs to get put in place at the time that final road approval is requested. So that 18 months starts at final road approval, technically according to these regulations that you have in place for subdivisions.
Why can't you leave the road so it can't be approved for 18 months by the Board of Selectment to be accepted as a road and let it sit there? Because that's going to be a hunk of change that people are going to have to put out. We haven't done that before.
Right. Well, and so that lies, there lies the question of if you have regulations put in place, why are those that are put in place? They're put in place for a reason, to protect the town, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
When were they put in place?
I'm sorry?
When were those, those conditions for the 18 months put in place?
Tom, we can see you.
Oh, Heidi, yeah, that's all right.
See you too.
So I researched back to 2002 and that regulation was put in place and Brad got his approval for his subdivision after that point in time. So that was already in place before he even came to the board with his proposal for the subdivision. So in, so 2007. Okay. So that was, that provision was already in place for at least a minimum of five years before he came and even got his approval.
All right. Let me ask you this. We've approved the road and everything. And we don't have that bond. How long has it been approved now? Eight months?
Since January.
All right. So seven, six?
Right. So I did, I did, so part of my recommendations, I have four options, and let me read them to you.
Now we have no bond.
Right now, there's no bond. There's, he does, Brad does have $18,000 left in a cash charity escrow account and that was for, that was for, you know, keeping in place as he was building the road. So that he can, that's definitely, he can get that money back. He's put in a request and hopefully tonight you guys will approve that and he can get his $18,000 back, clear that up. It's, it's the bond for that $23,000 that's in question. So if you just hear, let, hear me out, let me give you the four options that you could choose from and then it's your decision from there. So number one, you could either allow Mr. Jones to not have to submit a warranty security in accordance with the information that he received from Ms. Penny in her letter back in 2008, which said winter, one winter over. He's already done that. Two, you could hold Mr. Jones responsible for the regulations that were put in place when he received the conditional approval for his subdivision on June 19th in 2007, which is 10% at 18 months. And it's the same thing as regulations today. So that's number three. Hold him accountable for regulations that are currently in place, which is. His request for final road approval or, hold on. Or number four, not hold Mr. Jones responsible for submitting a warranty security since it has been over a year that the top coat was completed on May 18th, 2019. So he's already, say, 11 months into that, sort of 18 months since that top coat was on. This has been just a long sort of not usual project, right? Because it's taken so many years. Usually people just build and then be done. But this is not it. So it's up to you to decide, do you want to hold him accountable for that? Do you feel like it's been enough time that, so it's up to you.
To me, this should have been done when the road was getting approved. The planning board allowed this to slide by.
And at that, it was.
He should be held.
Right. It was discussed in January about putting, I had reached out to, he hadn't gotten back to me yet before that meeting. So that was talked about at the meeting in January, at that final road approval meeting. It was discussed that a bond should be put in place.
I didn't see it.
Yep. Okay.
We didn't do it by now, and he should be held liable.
I feel, I feel that he has been relieved of the responsibility because we have to follow that Sharon Penny had signed off on it. That's a commitment by the town. It may have been wrong, but it was a commitment and I don't think Brad should be held responsible for that.
One other thing, one other thing too, is usually these things are part of the conditions precedent that are named off on what is pertains to these things. So, you know, I feel the planning board itself was remiss and not, if that's, was not part of the conditions precedent. You know, I have a, I have a real problem is going back on this stuff later on in a time like this. I just, I just don't think it's, it's fair and appropriate.
I agree. Well, can we have a motion then? Should we require a bond or should we not require a bond? I make a motion, we allow Mr. Jones to continue without a bond on that road. Concern that it's.
He's done.
He's done with it. He's, the town has that road, I can believe, and the.
Has the town accepted the road, Virgil?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
Not yet?
It's coming.
Okay. Well, you know, I'll second it for the point of getting at Virgil's motion so we can discuss it. I, I think that, I just lost my train of thought. Oh, damn. It, you know, on these cases, you know, they could apply to be finished. And then what if we just wait the 18 months before the town accepts it? You know, the road will stay together. You know, if it stays together in 18 months, do we achieve the same function?
Yeah, but are they going to go back and fix it without the bond? That's your problem. You got to, the town wastes the 18 months and the road goes to hell. Now are you going to be able to get the contract back in there to fix it without having the bond money to fix it?
Well, let's put it this way. My point being is if we don't accept it and it's not right, then it's not accepted and it's, remains a private road.
But that's, we've already had one of these up to Chestnut Estates up there by off of 28A, off of Black Point there. And we've gone in and we've.
Ridge, Ridge Road, Virgil.
About the house, not paying it. All right. Do we have any more discussion?
That road did not need any approval. But that road, that road did not need any approvals. I mean, that road, I mean, his road up there, you don't see a, a fault line down the middle of it like you did on the one on Ridge Road.
Ridge Road just fell apart.
Yeah. But what I'm trying to say is, you know, Brad's road, you, you drive up there and it's as good as most roads, if not better.
Well, you can't go, you can't, it'll go, you can't, you can't necessarily, I mean, we all know Brad's good and he's going to do it right, but you can't go that way. You gotta go with friends and everybody.
Sorry. Hang on. I'm sorry. What, Josh? Brad has his hand raised?
Uh, yeah. Can you, can you all?
Yeah, yeah, we hear you, Brad.
So I, I think the difference is normally when you, when you place these bonds, uh, the town would hold that 10% of the total. And then whatever's remaining items are. So in other words, uh, technically there, there should have been 10% of the cost of the road. And then the, the additional paving, the top quota paving would have been held by the town. And then at the time of the paving, they'd release that money and that bond would have been held. But we actually wrote a letter to Sharon Penny and back in 2008 and we, we requested clarification on it and, uh, and her answer was that we needed to maintain that, um, bond and for one year or one winter, um, which it's gone through a winter and actually it's gone through a year now. So that, that was, that was a letter back from the planning board or Sharon Penny that, so we went on that assumption and, um, and you know, the towns had that $18,000 in their kitty and obviously that would have covered any kind of costs or any, any issues. But normally you would not go back and then increase a bond further. You would be, you reduce a bond as you build the road. You don't, you don't go in and get, get a higher bond as you go. Everything should maybe escalate down as you complete items. So, so that was really, you know, the difference was, was the fact that Sharon had made that uh, ruling and we, we had asked her several questions and that was what she came up with and, and we felt, we feel that we've, we've gone through that winter and the road is in great shape and um, you know, obviously if there's any kind of issues, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with it. But, uh, but that's, that's kind of where we're coming in. So.
So just so, just so what you're suggesting is that we would go with recommendation number one uh, that, uh, Jessica has put together.
Well, I believe that's the motion that's on the table right now. And that's seconded. And I think that the
I have a, I have a question in regard to that. If, if we, if we go along, uh, with, uh, what was discussed back in 2008, are we setting any kind of a precedent for, uh, future situations that are similar to this?
No, because we're perfectly true on Sharon's letter.
And I think the planning board's got to make sure that these bonds are figured out right in the beginning.
Right. Yep.
Yeah. This is not the time to be going at these things.
Yeah. Okay. But we will.
Yeah. I, I think that the, the town made it, the town made a commitment in writing in 2008 and, and he in good faith went with it. So I think that you, we gotta honor that and, and in the future on any of these things, we gotta set them up correctly and follow the rules.
Guys, you're gonna have another one again in a few minutes.
I don't believe there was setting any precedent. So there was a mistake made by a former planner and I don't anticipate that mistake to happen again. All right. Any more discussion? So can we have a roll call vote? We have a motion on the table to not require the bond and to honor the letter of the former planner.
Scott Williams, aye.
Russ Wilder, aye.
Russ Wilder, aye.
Bob Rigdon, aye.
Professor Temple, aye.
Virgil McDonald, aye.
And Drew Carter, aye.
All ayes.
Now that has to do with the bond. I have a very specific question about the escrow money that's still being held, $18,000.
Uh, yes. So Brad has submitted a request to release that and that can be released because that's a portion, that's a portion of the escrow account that's left over from when he was actually building the road. So that, since that's done, that's final road approval. He's, that's done and can be released.
Okay. So I thought I just heard he does not have final road approval.
He does.
But if he doesn't have the acceptance, yeah. All right. Excellent. So we do not need to vote on that?
Uh.
Or do we?
Yes. I actually would suggest that you just vote that he, I can, you're allowing me to release the bonds back there.
All right. So do I have a motion for that?
Don't move.
Second.
That was Russ Wilder making the motion and Scott seconding.
Thanks, Tom.
We gotta help him.
More discussion? Then roll call vote?
Scott Williams, aye.
Russ Wilder, aye.
Tom Hoops, aye.
Bob Rigdon, aye.
Professor Temple, aye.
And Drew Carter, aye. Sounds unanimous.
Okay. Brad, um, Brad, I'll get that processed. I'll start that process tomorrow for you.
Okay. That sounds great. I, I appreciate your time.
Okay.
So then I got an agenda discussion on scheduling the update of the Town of Alton Construction Observation Guidelines and the Town of Alton Site Plan Regulations. Well, did I hear earlier, we're gonna pull something together for next month? I imagine that.
Um, I think, um, well, I'd like to get some opinions from the board, but I think right now, um, although I, these are very important, that, um, Construction Observation Guidelines and the Site Plan Regulations were, um, sort of on the agenda back when, when Nick left or shortly after she left. So it's been a big on the agenda to update it. Um.
So keep it there as a reminder for now.
Yeah. I think leaving it on then, and yeah, I think, uh, since when we get to the next section over here, there are some other boards and committees that are going to start up. But I think at some point, yes, they need to be addressed.
All right. Uh, under new business, approval of minutes, uh, minutes of May 12th, 2020.
Um, I didn't have a chance to send these out. Um, the minutes are done and I'm about three quarters of the way proofing them. So I will have these available next, at the next meeting.
All right. Table that one. Um, correspondence for the board's review, discussion action, uh, discussion which board members will sit on ZAC, CIP and Master Plan Committees. So the ZAC Committee requires three planning board members. This is your chance to raise your hands electronically here. Anybody jumping up on you?
I would still like to serve on the ZAC if it's possible.
I would as well.
I think, and Drew, if you're, if you'd like to continue, I think we'd love to have you.
Uh, yeah, I, I'd be happy to be on it again. All right. Then we have the CIP. We need one planning board member and it can't be Virgil because you're already a selectman's rep, right? No. Got any volunteers out there? Do I see Bob vote there?
I, uh, I have been on the CIP for the last three years and I was hoping to put my uh, energy into the Master Plan Committee this, this time round. So I'd like to not be considered for the CIP.
But Bob, you did so nice with it.
Well, it's in such good shape now. It ought to be real easy for anybody else to carry on.
Yeah. Scott and I know enough about it though.
Yeah. I'm going to stay away from it completely.
Been there.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
All right. So we're getting, we're getting no hands raised on this one? All right. Let's move on. Master Plan.
Okay. So we don't, we just have Virgil for CIP?
Yeah.
Yes. And he'll have to keep us abreast.
I'm going on the committee so I can just write it out and hand it to you. Perfect.
I'm willing to serve on Master Plan, that's for sure.
All right. So that was, that was Tom?
Yes.
I'd, I'd like to be on the Master Plan Committee as well.
Tom, what'd you want at first round two?
Uh, I've served on three or four.
Three, I think, Tom.
Nice.
And I was on it too.
There was one, um, the one in 1982. I've been on a few of them.
Yeah, you have.
I just have a question about the Master Plan. The, the All In for Alton, they're a separate entity, aren't they?
Yes, they're not affiliated with the Town of Alton in the sense that we just banned them.
It's, it's, uh, that's purely a volunteer group.
So basically they just compiled information that they'll offer to the
Yeah. I anticipate they'd share it with the Master Plan Committee and All right. So we've got Tom and Bob. Anybody else? I tell you, I'd, I'd like to be involved in it. So.
If, if, uh, if, if what if, if what Wolfboro did is any model for us to consider, uh, their chairman of the planning board was the chairman of the Master Plan Committee.
Yeah. Don't, don't be banking on
That's pretty quick.
Again.
You can join up later if you
Absolutely.
If you don't.
You need, if you extra hand, you're extra head.
It is.
So, so, so to comment on your question, if you could sign up later on, if we have four people on a committee, now we have a forum.
Uh-oh. Drew's out.
So.
Well, the Master Plan Committee needs to have a
The Master Plan, we have
Tom, Bob and Russ.
Oh, I didn't hear Russ signing up. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah. No.
Sorry, Russ.
He silently raised his hand through Josh.
Oh, oh, okay.
We're not all necessarily on the same committee.
Yeah. The Master Plan, the Master Plan Committee really needs to be a diverse group of people from all different aspects of, of, of everything about the town.
Yeah. So you wind up with about four committees.
Yeah. So it shouldn't just be three people. We should have laypeople. We should have maybe an attorney that, somebody like, um, you know, the, the chairman of the zoning board, something like that, that's on town. You know, there should be a group of people that assemble for this. So this is a, a well thought out, well diverse group of opinions.
The, the RFP that will go out for the consultant, uh, needs to address all those things. That's, that's part of, part of what will be getting a consultant to help us with.
And also you break down some of the chapters into different subcommittees and different people handle different parts.
Right.
So we don't have to have a forum altogether at all.
All right. Now, does the board want Jessica to send a letter to each board in town? To ask if they can put a volunteer on it, like the zoning board? Maybe we get Tim Morgan and Paul Muncioni on it?
Yeah. But we also want citizens as well. I think it's going to the paper and on the website.
I know. And then you gotta put it out for people to sign up.
Yep.
Once again, the purpose, the purpose of the consultant is to help us put this all together in terms of who participates and, and getting a good cross-section of the community involved.
Yeah.
And, and that, that's something we're not going to answer tonight.
Well, that's people are volunteering.
Right. So, so my comments to Virgil's comment is we're trying to just get, um, a committee together. So do I, do I end up paying for an ad? I mean, I, I don't have a ton of money, especially right now. We're having to re-notice all of these applications that got canceled between planning and zoning COVID.
We should probably meet, we should probably meet with the consultant first.
Yeah.
That would be a good idea, Tom.
Right. Now let's get, start there.
That way you guys can create an outline and then follow the outline.
That's what I was trying to say.
All right.
Well said, Bob.
Yeah.
Just to clarify though, are we talking about though, getting some of the other town uh, groups involved so that you are kind of drawing from zoning and selectmen and whomever, you know, and, and to, to form this initial committee that then will seek out your, um, your guidance from your professional?
Okay. Well, as, as Tom will verify, that we have a lot of citizen participation in the past ones we've been with.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I, I, this very early stage is not when you bring all the citizens in, you know, the
No, exactly. Get the outline together. No, this is a planning board function. So have the planning board go sit together with the, the consultant, develop an outline and then move out from there. Because if you make it too big to start with, you might not get anything done.
Right.
Right. Because this was my plan to get a few, a couple planning board members to start with and then we go from there. To just sort of be able to talk to the consultants.
Oh, you got that all set up. Move on.
Great. Moving right along. All right. Uh, let's see. We're on to correspondences. Being discussion on the results of the town meeting decision regarding the planning board's warrant articles.
So this, this I really wanted to address months ago. Um, so we're kind of just behind. It's just really a follow-up um, to the warrant articles that we proposed through ZAC. Um. There was, yeah, there was a few of them that didn't pass. Um. So the amendment to the amusement use indoor and outdoor, that didn't pass. Uh, firewood lumberyard also did not pass and
People, people must not have understood them.
Exactly.
And, and, and to be honest with you, this is part of the reason why I wanted to start that Facebook page. It has another avenue to get information out there because after, after, there was a lot of confusion. I had lots of people coming in, sort of complaining about like, you're going to stop me from, um, processing firewood and, and it was a lot of it was a lot of misconception. Um, so I, so John and I created explanations for every single amendment. And, um, we, we posted that, uh, we even gave one to Ruben. We left it in a store. Um, we posted it on the website and I, and we got a lot of good feedback from that. So.
But every time this town passes an ordinance, it's taking more of our rights away. And I've said it and I set it up at the vote booth and everything else that we should not be passing any ordinances. Because it just keeps pulling our rights away, isn't it, for the way we live here? Yeah. I've been here all my life and I've watched these ordinances come in and just keep pulling rights away. And everybody says, no, they don't do that. Well, yes, they do.
I agree with you, Virgil. And I've asked at a previous meeting, I don't know if you remember, that we should look through our ordinances and find out the ones that don't apply and get rid of them.
And don't fit here and get rid of them. That's right.
Like the 1973 one that says no phosphate soap can be sold.
It's like the rooster ordinances, can't have roosters and this and that. I mean, every time they put
Can't have a rooster in their Lakeshore residential.
I think, I think we're kind of wandering off a little bit here. Um, so was there anything that you wanted to cover in the morning?
No, I just, I just wanted to just follow up. All the other amendments that we proposed passed. So I just, just to follow up, that's all. I didn't want anyone to have any questions on anything, but it was just letting you know.
No, I think it's sad that we, 770 voters out of 4,700 though. That is, I think that's a sad voter turnout.
How many?
777 voters out of 4,712. 777 voters out of 4,712.
I've seen him down in the high fives and the low sixes, yeah, absolutely.
Alright, so item C on the list is discussion on the RFP regarding the Master Plan Consultant. And we're basically, the committee's gonna take that and run through that.
Yeah, we've sort of talked about that already. I did reach out to a lot of planners throughout the state, and got examples of their RFPs for Master Plan Consultants. I have probably at least a dozen of them that I have to sort through.
Good to go.
Sort of recent ones, maybe a little bit older ones. So I have to compile some sort of spreadsheet or something to sort everything out. It's a lot of information, and a lot of, and every one of them is different. You know, depending on what they have, chapters, and you know, are they a city, are they a small town, are, you know, so there's...
That's good, because you can look at the way they all interact and...
Yeah, there's really a lot to go through. So that's what's coming along with, you know, getting this committee together and the master consultant. So at some point soon, we'll have everything sort of beginning.
Alright. Alright, next is letter dated May 20, email correspondence dated June 5, 2020, from Kevin Leonard regarding W&amp;W Route Trust LLC.
So this is, this has to do with an inspection that came on Scott's subdivision. We kind of talked back and forth, he had some questions on some things. So I thought it best that if he writes them down, so that way I could send it over to Scott, and you know, he can address some of the issues, whether, you know, they are actual issues according to his project, or there could be some misunderstandings with Kevin on some of the processes. I did, Kevin wanted to know sort of the subdivision on a whole, just so he can have an idea as to what he's looking at. So I did send him some information. And I did talk to Scott about Kevin's May 12 letter. And we chatted a bit on the phone, and I asked Scott if he could share today and sort of clarify some of the problems or issues that Kevin came up with. So I don't know, Scott, if you wanna start addressing some of the...
This May 12 letter I received on, I believe it was the 5th of May. And the June 5 letter, tonight is the first time I see that. So there's a problem right there. The previous inspector was Farmhouse Land Development that did the first phase. Yep, go ahead.
Scott, can I interrupt for a minute? So you are not speaking as a planning board member right now?
That is correct, I am an individual as this time I'm speaking, thank you.
Okay, alright, thanks.
Yep, yep. And so, I was never, he alludes to a punch list. I have never been given a punch list. And the last I knew, Farmhouse Land Development said it was wonderful. The last time he was here was the date that they put the final coat of asphalt down. And we have beautiful grass growing on the sides, and if you look at this versus most town roads, and Virgil Clinitessa, because he's been in here a bunch of times, I just don't have two-foot shoulders, I have 20 and 30-foot shoulders to keep the road nice and clear. I have, just recently, did the road even have a crack. And this spring, I had a gentleman come in, doing like what the town does, and put a tar surface on the cracks, the few that are here. And you're more than willing to come up and take a peek and see what we did. So the cracks weren't many. And so he said, "Three previous town engineers." Well, I think one was CMA, which was the design engineer, and Tom, you can remember this.
Nightmare.
They charged more to review this project than to engineer it to begin with. And one of the problems we had with CMA engineers on the block walls, the landscape blocks that we used for the, call it the bridge if you must, they wanted all those seams grouted. And the whole purpose of those rocks, of those blocks, are if water gets in there, it can get out. That's why you put stone behind it and drainage behind it, but also between them, it can get out. And this was what done, and Farmhouse said, "Why are we pouring enough concrete there? This is ridiculous," and we changed it. So both, all of my wetlands were done back ages ago. I had a, I believe it was a 10-month extension to my wetlands, and we got them all done in that timeframe. And the way, they're all stabilized and everything's going good. As we moved down the 500 lineal feet of road construction that we're finishing up, that's 50 feet wide, so you're looking at about 25,000 square feet. I called my engineer, and he says, "Absolutely not, do you need one, an AOT permit to continue this section of road?" So that's something I guess we have to wrestle with. Da-da-da-da-da, going down here. Yeah, he asked if the road was accepted by the town, I says, "No, it is not, and I don't intend on it being done until I basically finish it and let it go 18 months when it's done." And I will probably, like I've done in other communities, give the town the payment for the one-inch wear course, like I've done many times before, and they put it in when they feel it's ready. Or if they want, I'll be more than happy to put the one-inch wear course in. I had called for an inspection early on to come up, and it was ages, he was there before, and only was here for a few minutes, and never got out of his car, or his truck, or whatever the heck it was. So that's this situation here. This is, you know, I know to have the road inspected before, at subgrade, to make sure it's shaped properly, the drainage in, then the next one-foot level of road comes in, we get it inspected again, and then the final six inches, and then they're usually here for the placement of the two-and-a-half inches of asphalt. And they're here to check the temperature of it. And I always provide the waste slips, which they want, to make sure that the proper amount of asphalt has been used on the job. He, if he had gotten out of his vehicle on number three, and question number four, item three, if he had gotten out of his car, he would have seen the wetlands buffers, that the 25-foot disc that's on, Cindy Balsius installed those before we even started the road. Because I know that one point, my approval said, "I have to install silt fence before tree removal." And Tom, we had this conversation, and Cindy Balsius was on the board. I says, "That makes no sense at all, the tree guy's gonna come in and drop a tree across the silt fence, and he's gonna haul it out with a skidder, and there goes the silt fence." And everybody agreed that the best management practices were, once the trees are done, before stumping, that's when you disturb the earth, and so that's what we did. Going down there. The, let's put it this way, the erosion control is there. I did not put erosion control going uphill, because last I knew, water does not run uphill, unless it backs up, and that's not an issue. So we have erosion control where we have, you know, areas that it could have a problem. And they're there, and he can come look at it if he so cares to.
He does admit though, Scott, it's a windshield survey.
Yeah, yeah, I know, yep. And then it goes to the AOT, we discussed that. So I guess I'll answer any questions, and he's talking about the new observation guidelines. The observation guidelines are the ones I'm using, are the ones that were in place when the road, when my approval was given by the planning board. We don't change the rules after the fact. So that's that, any questions, anybody?
Well, how do you deal with, you're dealing with three different inspectors, right?
Well, I don't know, CMA was the early, well, we had a guy that did the drainage, his name was Ruben Hall, I believe. He was the guy that designed the drainage systems. And then CMA reviewed everything as a consulting engineer for the town. And then Farmhouse was the engineering company that reviewed it as it was being built. And he provided inspections, and Jessica should have them on file.
Yeah, but losing him was a great loss.
Absolutely, absolutely. So I don't know what to do here, but I have a house that I'm building, and I don't intend to wait around, so...
Good question, why do we get the letter? We have inspections and everything else that have been done, but we don't get copies of it, so... I mean, I realize it's a new engineer.
Of the inspections?
Yeah, because he, this guy don't know how to move forward. Scott's saying a lot of it's been done, and it has been done, well...
Can I just interrupt you one second? Scott, those, what were you just referring to, inspections that should be in the file?
Farmhouse Land Development has a one-page checklist. He lists what you have for equipment on property. Was someone saying something? He lists what equipment is on the property, what he reviewed, and whatever his opinion of the work was. And those all should be in my file.
Okay.
And I don't get them. What's that?
When did you get approval for this?
Oh gosh, 2005, I wanna say? You know, the economy was bad, and I had a bond in place...
It's been going on a long time.
Yeah, I had a bond in place, and then the slowdown happened of 2007. And the bank said clearly, "They're not gonna do bonds anymore." And anybody that's been around the construction industry would understand that. And so then Jim Cecil said, "Well, bond or nothing at all." And then we had a gentleman, an interplanter come in, his name was Mike Garapi. And he says, "What do you mean, you can't do that? There is an RSA that calls builder bond." Apparently, our town attorney didn't know that. And so I built the road and paved it, and there we are, and I've built nine houses on it.
And it was approved as you went along?
Absolutely, yeah, Farmhouse Land Development did it. So I'm at a loss at what you guys are gonna want me to do. But I'm not gonna place bonds, I'm gonna do the builder bond like I did the last time. Apparently, it seemed to work out okay, because the road's here, I'm here, everything else is going on, and it's fine. So I don't know what you all want me to do.
I'm at a little bit, I don't know what we're talking about. Is the development, is he still... I know what I'm talking about, the development. Is Kevin saying there's a problem, what's the problem?
So there was some issues, and we addressed it with Scott.
No, wait, 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 Jessica, there, he did not list issues with what we are doing. Make that clear.
Okay, alright.
It seemed more like questions.
Yep, they're questions, and information he does not have. You all have his letter right in front of you, read it.
This is your call for when you need an inspection?
Yeah.
So you have clarified some of the things that he's written in his letter. So I'm gonna get back to him and get back to him on some of these things that he's asked for.
I am probably gonna engage my own engineer to review this, what I'm doing, as Rick Lundey did for up in East Dalton. He could not find a situation that he was susceptible to at an engineer. So I am gonna have my own engineer also review this, because I'm not gonna tolerate being jerked around by this guy, plain and simple.
So, I got a question. Doesn't, is he, was he doing an inspection that he's supposed to be doing? And would he normally fill out like an inspection report? I'm confused by this letter, I don't...
I told Jess that I needed him to come out, because I was down to subgrade. And you know, this, and this is before you put any material in to shape the subgrade, because sometime the subgrade is, when you get the topsoil all out, it's not ready for the next levels of gravel. You have to shape the road and get it shaped, and then move forward. And we were at that point.
Yeah, so was that a point when he was supposed to be there to do an inspection?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so then he was supposed to prepare an inspection report based on that, right?
I would think so, but it all seems like, reading his last page that he has here, that he wants to prepare a bill. You know? And this is, I'm gonna have to pay for his incapabilities, and I don't have, take that lightly.
So Jessica, I could be clear, you called him because you weren't ready for an inspection.
No, I did not call him, I called Jessica to call him, because that's the protocol you do.
So he was called because you were ready to have a portion inspected?
The subgrade inspected, to make sure that I did... Yeah, just to make sure the topsoil's out of there, Raj.
Right, but so he came up with this instead?
Yep.
I mean, this is...
I'm not, I mean, I've read the letter twice now, and I...
Me too.
I guess I'm not really reading it, you know? His biggest hangup is, is that he feels like he wasn't included in a pre-construction meeting, but...
Pre-construction?
Chances are, the tip wasn't around back when it was, the permit was additionally issued.
He might have been in high school.
So it's, so reading this letter, it sounds that he's confused as to, where does he pick up? So this has been pre-development, so a lot of it has been developed, and now, now Scott, you're at the tail end. So I think he's...
No, I'm not at the tail, I'm in phase two of a three-phase project.
There shouldn't be any question where he picks up. You called him to inspect the road base?
Yeah, he's trying to, he's trying to put more into this than he's, than has to do. Wrong idea. These guys like to run wild and build their bills.
Yeah.
We had that problem right along.
Absolutely.
I know what you're saying, but a limited erosion control, he's a little concerned about your erosion control that's in place. You, I think if you can talk him through what you talked through with us, I think all of that kind of makes sense. You know, most of these people do have some experience and some reasonableness, they just wanna be talked through it.
Well, he and I talked for a while while he was on site, and then he produced this letter. So...
Yeah.
You know, maybe he's not the guy for the job, that's what I'm trying to say.
Alright, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, maybe he's not the one for the job, but I don't think that this board could permit you to bring your own engineer in to oversee your own work as the...
Yeah, no, I, you misunderstood me. I'm bringing my engineer to record what's going on, so when this guy comes up with all these fang-dangles letters that he's done, I have something to fight it with. That's what I'm going in.
My question is, this engineer, who asked him about the remaining work and the developer not having a bond or anything else? I mean, that's none of his business. Whether the town takes a bond or the developer...
He's, yeah, he's reading through the regulations and he's grabbing all of the things that cost him.
It's none of his business whether we hold a bond from a developer or not.
Right.
He's the town inspector for inspections, it's none of his business whether we hold a bond on anybody.
Then I'm not gonna pay for that. I'm not gonna approve paying for him coming up with all this crap that is not part of his purview.
But I don't think he could be on that, you wouldn't be able to do that as a planning board member, because this is your project, right?
Well, I'm not speaking as a planning board member right now.
No, but say, approve paying him and stuff like that, you can't...
Well, no, they always, they, when you get the bill, it's always been said, "I got the bill from X so-and-so." Is that okay with you? And I'd say, "Yep, okay to release it."
Oh, I see what you mean, okay.
Yep. Because I've had $5,000, better than $5,000 in there for years.
Oh, yeah, that's just what I mean, they kept adding on and adding on, and this is the problem, right along. Okay, yes, and it sure seems that way, but in the end, it actually came out less, because... But Raj also, it would have been four or five times I do it. Oh, yes. And this is what I've been saying, the engineers keep... And this is what I've been saying, the engineers keep, they go to a project and they tack on, tack on, tack on, tack on. Like this guy's supposed to be there for the road bed. That's when he should have been inspecting the road bed. He has no right to go through the whole project or anything else. He should be inspecting the road bed if that's what he's there for. And be called for the next spot when the next step. Right, right. Yeah, that's why I don't understand all of this, you know.
I'm about to call him again. Because I'm moving forward, you know? And where he has his, his, he's dubbing around. I mean, I'm not going to wait. I mean, it's, I'm just not going to play his game.
But I, I just think this engineer is wrong on some of these questions. That's my feeling.
So who, Jessica, who, who addresses this engineer and, and, and helps give him some direction in what?
No one, they run rogue.
And I think he's supposed to follow the construction observation guidelines. That we looking at?
Yep, but which ones is he looking at?
Yeah, he referenced 2015 in here, but obviously that's not applicable.
Nope.
Right. He asked me of, of some sort of background of, of the subdivision.
Why does he need that?
I'm, I'm not entirely sure. I, that, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, let's have him inspect the work that we're doing and then move forward. I don't need him to look at the first 1,250 feet of road. It's there. It's not going to get changed.
And that's what he's doing here because he's reviewing with the code enforcement officer, other town officials. And basically my initial thoughts on this project. Based on a limited information I have been provided, additional concerns may arise as I dig into the project.
And code, and code enforcement has no jurisdiction here.
No. He, he to look at the road, not to dig through all the paperwork, not to get paid to go through everything. He's paid to look at the road, write a report saying, yes, the base is good.
All right. So tonight's information that you're giving me is helpful. So I can relate all of this to him.
I think, you know, you're perhaps forgetting something here, which is that he's coming in in the middle and doesn't know what's going on before. And he should get at least some description of the background.
I think that's why he's asking questions.
Well, like he asked for a punch list. If you find a punch list, I'll eat the thing because it's not there.
But he should have been told when he was looking at the road base. So.
Should he not? Should he not be getting a history from his own company? Who's been involved in the project from the get-go?
They weren't.
They weren't?
They weren't involved.
We've changed more. Right. But, but there should be reports in a file that this guy should be able to review so that he knows what the Proctor Sim analysis and all that other stuff that he needs to know for that road to be constructed correctly.
But he shouldn't be looking at the other part of the road. The other part of the road is all inspected and done. It's paved. His house is all the way down.
But he, he also may want to see what the materials were, the source of those materials that were used to be successful and were approved as the road continues on.
If he's an engineer, he should be able to look at the material onto that road and say yes or no.
Yeah.
Because he's going to take a sample of it, check it. Because if he don't, he shouldn't have his life.
Right. But he also needs to compare that sample against whatever the requirements are.
And the thing about it is, is when I buy the gravel, I get the, the DOT approved gravel that's made for it. And uh, that's that. You know?
Yeah. So it, it sounds to me like what we really need to do is just kind of refocus this engineer on what he's being hired to do and not that this is a opportunity to go crazy on building.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I think that's kind of concerning. I'm I'm curious what that bill's going to look like. There's, there's a few different things I've mentioned that's, you know, uh, looking, thinking. Scott saying, Scott, make sure you bring that bill in, will you?
Yeah.
Might have to take a mortgage out.
Nah. That's why I'm going to hire an engineer to, because what they charge me is then I'll have a good benchmark of what I should be paying, shouldn't I now?
All right. We got anything more on that? We already beat that one.
I, I'm, I'm done. My blood pressure's up.
Yeah, we can tell you.
All right. So this is a little bit correspondence. Uh, we've had some general subdivision approval of this subdivision. Copy of House Bill 1129. Oh, that was the notes requirements for the. Um, any other business that may become, come before this board?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I still want to speak as Scott Williams. What, where do I stand in the meantime here? Because I'm not far from wanting him to be able to release me to be putting the next foot of gravel on this road.
I, I, I believe that Jessica is going to reach out and try and get this guy back in line. Am I correct?
Yes. After tight meeting and things that we discussed, I I'm understanding as to why he needed to know all he wanted to know in this, in this letter. And sort of refocus him back onto the things that he should be inspecting. Does that sound good, Scott?
Yeah, I, and if, if he does need any file background information to help him do his inspection of what's currently being built, not what was built before, but if it helps him. I mean, we should be able to provide the files to him.
Yeah, absolutely. The files should be there and it should be complete. But I do know that there's been a lot of stuff lost over the years of my stuff in town hall.
And I did, Scott, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with you on that. Working in the office, sometimes there are files or things in files that are difficult to locate. So I, I will agree with that. And, and over the last couple of months, it's, it's been very difficult to um, provide information to the public with the building being closed. Um, so it's been a matter of, yes, so it's been a matter of um, not only are my secretary and I trying to do, you know, regular work throughout the, the um, you know, throughout the day. Is we're also having to take the time and where the people that are looking through files and, you know, trying to find that information. So it's, that's been, that's been extremely time consuming.
Yeah, and just try to get me correspondence quicker than, you know, if it comes in, please get it right out.
And I do, and I, I will publicly say that I apologize for holding on to that.
And I, I, I'm not trying to put a stick, Jessica, I'm not trying to put a stick in your eye.
I have no problem with, with apologizing that, that, that got lost in my shuffle and I just wanted to state that.
Oh, you said that already. I mean, that's fine. I, I accept that with no problem.
I'll get, uh, make sure that you get things in a timely fashion now that I'm working back in the office full time. Next.
All right.
I have a question.
So this is the part where Scott steps on the disc side of the table again, right?
Yep, I'm back.
Scott, back off playing the board?
I'm back.
Now, is this, did this pass House and everything?
Uh, no. So um, so this House Bill 1129 that's under, it's just really for your information, but I'll share a little bit of it just so you know what it is.
I think we should send the letter out.
So, so this, this wasn't on my radar for, for another, one reason or another. It didn't pop up earlier. So House Bill 1129 is, is proposing that um, the town doesn't have to notice applicants cases in the newspaper anymore. So that's going to save each applicant potentially, you know, $7, $7.5 a pop.
You have to put it on your website and in two public places. And you have to, you have to place a public hearing under RSA at least 10 calendar days before the hearing.
And that's what I currently do. So that means town website, post office and the front of the building. And I throw it on a Facebook page.
So that's, did pass.
So, so it, so it passed the House. So now it was in the Senate and the Senate was supposed to um, decide on that today. But since it wasn't, it, it wasn't reported yet on the end of the day. So I don't know if the Senate passed or not. Um, the House voted on it, about to pass. So it seems like a lot of people are in favor of it.
Well, if they're in favor, is he going to contact all the townspeople? Says here that if you own property in the town, you have to notify of every meeting.
That would be a matter. Yeah, a matter.
Hey, you are notified. Any person in the municipality may public hearings. Opposed amendments or zoning leases or municipalities shall provide notice at no cost to the person.
They request it, if they request it.
So he's saying that if everybody in town says, I want you to personally mail me a notification.
Send the letter down, tell them.
Yeah. I think it's unfortunate. I think it's too late for that.
I hadn't read, I hadn't read that into that. You're right though. That's basically exactly what that says.
Yeah. Because somebody didn't get notified for a meeting. So now they're going to change everything.
Just what you said, Virgil, earlier.
Right.
Are we, are we done on that?
I think we are. We're on to uh, any other business that may come before the board?
Six on mine.
Yeah.
Dinner.
So I added this, I, I added this when we were talking about approving the agenda. So um, so uh, I, I, I just wanted to send out reminders to board members um, about some key components that pertains to being a board member. So if you are approached by a potential applicant. Someone comes up, they want to start talking to you about their project. You, you shouldn't be talking to an applicant about a project. Um, by doing this, you're potentially holding in a legal meeting, say if.
Not unless you got a quorum.
So, right, I'm talking out on the street. You're out shopping, you're out doing something, someone comes up and starts wanting to talk to you about your, their project. As a board member, you can't do that.
As a board member, you can do that as long as you don't have the quorum.
Okay.
No, you can't.
So, so you're, you're member number one. You're talking to so-and-so about a project. So then you mentioned it to men, to member number two. So then member number three, so number number two starts talking to member three. Number three talks to member four. Now you've held in a legal meeting. It's, it's like a grapevine. You know, you talk to one person, the next person talks to the next person. And then if four people are talking about the same project, whether it's it's together or whether it's individually, it's a meeting. So that, I just wanted to remind you to, to refrain from doing that. It, it can cause problems and it, it can cause potential litigation issues. So I just wanted to just remind you, if you run into someone and they say, hey, I want to talk to you about this project. What you should do, maybe say, um, you know, I'm sorry, as a board member, I can't talk to you individually about your project. You know, why don't you call the office? You can talk to Amelia, you can talk to me. Um, you can talk to John about things. Um, and, and not only does that cause a potential illegal, illegal meeting, if you start talking to somebody about their project, now you have privileged information about a project. So now you've created a conflict of interest because now you have information about the project that none of the other board members have. And now when you come to that meeting and that applicant is sitting across the table from you, you have to recuse yourself. That's just the way it works. I'm not telling you.
It's one of us.
This is why I was.
Do you want to share the treaty?
It's, it's a little ridiculous. Who, who was never, who's never been at hand but somebody goes up to you and starts talking about their project. What are you supposed to do, punt them?
Nothing you can do.
But this, but I'm just reminding you of, of to just be, you know, board members and that this is protocol.
Now what do they do? Now what do they do when they catch you? And they've tried for two, two, three weeks to get answers out of the planning office and they're not getting them.
Does that happen often?
Yes, yeah, it seems to.
Yeah, but you can't give, what Jessica is right, you can't, you can't speak to somebody about a project and give them advice. Send them to the office and, and they got to do their job.
Well, I, no, I.
Don't give them advice.
That was a serious question because then that reflects upon my.
Yeah, they've had it. I've had a few complaints on.
Okay.
A few different people.
If we, we, if you want to discuss that with me, I I would like you to let me know because I.
I know, I would have called you when I got them.
I would like to know this.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, can we adjourn this meeting, please?
Uh, I don't think we're fully through all the items yet.
You still got Paul.
No.
No, we don't. What?
All right, we don't.
What do we have?
I want to have Amelia's adjourn.
You all done?
You have, you have a couple other items to, to cover here.
I don't think so.
There's number six that she added.
What's that, Tom?
I thought she added number six. Oh, no outside dogs allowed.
That looks like. Everybody.
I thought it was inside dog to me. I thought Scott just approved disappearance.
Oh, thanks, Bob.
Hey guys, hey guys, let's pull it together if we want to get this over. So there was, at the very beginning of this meeting, there was a number six added to the agenda. And that's what we're going through right now. It's not, maybe not printed on your agendas, but it was added at the beginning of the meeting. So we can wrap this up.
Yeah. So there was one other thing I wanted to, to point out. That there are certain times that you should recuse yourself. So like I already said, if you're talking to an applicant about an application, then you need to recuse yourself. If you have a relative coming over to, to be an applicant, you should recuse yourself. You have some type of relationship with an applicant that you're not sure of. And, and I'm just going by the DBA. The DBA does this. They're, they're very clear, they're very open and they say, you know, I used to hang out with this person. And they ask the board members like, are you okay with me sitting here? It's just as simple as that. It's just.
We've done that, we've done that a lot, Jessica. We've done that a lot.
Okay. So we, is just discussion next month about roads and subdivisions and I'm done.
All right.
All right. So we have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A question, were we going to discuss a sidewalk?
Well, yeah, you got to have an application first.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have an application yet. So.
Okay.
Right. Because you get the application first and then you do the sidewalk, sidewalk.
Right. So, all right. So we, we have a motion in the second.
Yep.
Roll call vote.
Scott Williams, aye.
Tom Hope says aye.
Russ Wilder, aye.
Bob Brigant, aye.
Drew, aye. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Have a nice night.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Jessica.